Would you leave the indication, please?
That's great. Lord heavenly Father, we just thank you for the blessings of life. Lord, we thank you for 2019 that you have blessed us beyond measure as a county and as individuals. Lord, as we approach a new year with 2020, help us to put you first and foremost in our county decisions, Lord, because you know what's best, and help us to honor you in all our dealings here. Lord, thank you for the people that are here out tonight. Give them clarity and give us wisdom as commissioners, Lord, to always do the right thing in your sight. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One thing we want to change on the agenda is item number 10 under New Business, the Employee Safety Grant from ACCG. We actually had covered this back in October, the $3,000 grant for emergency washer extractor for decontaminated fire protective clothing, and we just had confusion on the grant. But it was, that grant was going to be for redundancy, so let's track item 10 from the agenda. Item two, approve the minutes of the December 10th, 2019 Regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioners, please let me know when you've read and when you're ready to proceed.
I've read the minutes and I have no dig.
Okay.
I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion for approval of the December 10th meeting minutes. Ask for a motion. Okay, I've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Minutes are approved. Okay, public commentary. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, come forward to the podium, to the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live in Fanning County, and please keep your comments to three minutes maximum. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Holcomb.
Thank you. It's very new here, and I think we're already starting out on the wrong foot. I noticed on the agenda tonight that we've got an architect that is supposed to be giving a presentation for the White Path Building. I don't remember any meeting where the three of you voted to hire an architect. I don't remember a public hearing that we were going to start working on plans. I don't remember anything being official, and now all of a sudden it's on the agenda. Also, over the past couple of weeks, received a couple of phone calls that the three of you gentlemen have met at the White Path Building, just the three of you, without it being notified to the public, and that's not right. The 1.3 million that the Speaker of the House, David Ralston, announced at the Tea Party meeting that I was at, I don't remember even that being voted on as to apply for a grant. I attend all of these meetings, and there is an awful lot that you guys are keeping from the public, and then the public wants to know. And I'm just, one more time, from the podium, I am begging the three of you to please remember that you work for the citizens of Fanning County, that you owe the citizens of Fanning County transparency when it comes to the rules that you're making, the new laws that they're making, the way that you spend their taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Holcomb, I'll clarify a few things for you.
Thank you.
Number one, the White Path Building, which the county owns, we three commissioners are allowed by law to inspect county property, and we did not meet as three. We met as a group with library people and other folks over there. So that means it's completely illegal. The grant was actually applied for by the Mountain Regional Library. They applied for, and that grant's going through them. Anything after this, and we will get into that, we have, this is just the beginning. We haven't voted on an architect yet. This is all part of the presentation, so a lot of things, there's a lot of questions and we don't have the answers yet, but the bottom line, it is nothing has been illegal, and certainly nobody's trying to keep anything from the public. Who would like to be next? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is David Squire. I live at 664 High Meadows Drive, Morganton, Georgia. I'd like to talk to you about Mitchell Branch Road, which is a road that connects Sparks Road to Wonder Bear Road. Approximately six months ago, Mitchell Branch Road was blocked by gates, one gate located at the Wonder Bear end and the other gate approximately 50 yards in from Wonder Bear. Finding out that the street was blocked or the road was blocked, I took the problem to Mr. Zach Ratcliffe, who was a contractor of Fanning County Roads. Mr. Ratcliffe said he was aware of the gates and had told the parties who installed the gates that they would have to be removed if anyone complained. Mr. Ratcliffe then suggested that I go talk to the parties involved. Approximately two days later, I visited said parties and asked them to remove the gates. They politely told me that they would not. I then returned to Mr. Ratcliffe's office and reported what happened. Mr. Ratcliffe said he would look into it. To present, the gates are still blocking the Mitchell Branch Road for the property owners that live along that road. High Meadows Community has 40 lots, which basically we have 10 people that live there and all the other houses that live down the road. If we have an emergency and a tree falls down, we can't get out. It's imperative that these gates basically be removed for the safety of the people that live along that road. It's a taxpayer road, and I just can't believe somebody would just let somebody put gates up on a taxpayer road. That's all I have.
Sir, county maintenance ends at 1177 Mitchell Bridge Road, just this side of that gate. The rest of that's private property, and we don't have any responsibility beyond that.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Because when I first moved in, it was an open road.
Well, just for clarification, that's, we have a number of road clarifications at our workshop, and that is all. That's the clarification and the answer there.
Okay, because now that road in between the gates is being used for a storage facility. They have trailers and mobile homes there, but I guess they now own that property?
That's private property, by and only there, yes, sir.
When did that happen?
I couldn't answer that for you.
Because it used to be open to traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Dan Systrom. I reside in Morganton, High Meadows subdivision. Since August, I've been sending, just to reinforce what Commissioner Squire just said, I've been sending information to you guys here, to the secretary, to you, Mr. Hilton, you, Mr. Johnson, via mail, certified mail, text emails, and talk with Mr. Ratcliffe about the same, one of the same things that Mr. Squire just brought up, the blockage of what we thought was a county road, and you're telling us now that's not a county road.
Beyond that gate is the end of county maintenance.
Okay, fine. So up to High Meadows, where we are, sometime last year, the county paved all the way up to the beginning on Mitchell Branch Road, right where there's a dangerous curve that goes around and it'd fall off, and then they stopped paving right there. And our question was, why did they stop paving at that point and not continue the paving around Mitchell Road? Because what you're cutting out is a two-lane paved road going into a one-lane gravel road that's eroding with the rain, and constantly cars coming head on into it, and we're just trying to figure out, number one, how come we couldn't get any response from you guys on this? I mean, no answers at all, not even a "thank you for writing." And then, secondly, if we've got your attention on this, can we get it fixed? Can we get that continuation of paving where it stops right off, just right when it starts into Mitchell Branch Road? Can we get that paved all the way around to wherever the county line, the end of the county responsibility is?
We're not going to give you an answer here, so we're just listening to you.
Okay, all right. Well, that was the question. We've mailed, mailed, we've talked, and I've talked to Mr. Ratcliffe several times. Again, we're just having trouble getting a response, so if we could get some kind of response from you folks about whether it can be done, if it can be done, what it'll take, or if it can't be done, why it can't be done. It's just, we're having trouble getting any kind of reception.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Yes, sir?
William Franklin, 4 High Meadows Drive, also from that area. On that road, Mitchell Branch Road, is very narrow. I don't know if you've ever been up it, but as you're going up, there's already been several accidents, and also there's a culvert that's about ready to drop out, and we'd like to see that fixed, because if there is an emergency, nobody's going to get out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are these complaints on the park were considered the county road, or is this a part of the gate?
Mitchell Bridge would be county road to the end, correct?
Mitchell Branch.
Mitchell Branch is county road up to the end.
Exactly.
And Zach's been at there many times.
It's always been paved, and when it was, it was paved, probably three years.
The parts you're complaining about, though, are on?
On Mitchell Branch, yes.
Yes, a part of Mitchell Branch was paved, and then it stopped right prior to going into this dangerous curve that we've been talking about, where it dropped off about 30 feet and turned up, and the paving just stopped for no apparent reason. And now we've got people going head on, coming from a two-lane asphalt road onto a one-lane gravel road into each other around a dangerous curve, and we just don't know why the paving stopped.
So is that a two-lane road before it was paved, a one-lane road? So there has been no, what I'm trying to get at here, so has this been a two-lane road into a one-lane road for a long time, or has something just happened?
Apparently, from what I just heard, it was paved three years ago.
Not paved, just with the road?
Yeah, the road goes from a two-lane road up on Sparks.
Right.
And then turns off after you go past squirrel hunting. You turn on to Mitchell Branch Road, and when it turns on to Mitchell Branch Road, it goes from a two-lane asphalt to about 100 feet of two-lane asphalt, and then it just stops. And then from there on, it's a single-lane gravel road that goes into a very dangerous curve, and two cars cannot pass on that curve, and it's used every day by FedEx and your police force and everybody. Everybody lives out there, has to negotiate that, and we're just wondering, why did it stop?
Excuse me, but if they could just widen that for a minute.
Folks, if you're looking for an answer on this, you want a written answer, the other commissioners are welcome to go look at that. That road, whatever pavement was done, I'm very certain it's been years ago. Okay? Was it just last year? Very certain of that. Right, Zach? You got any doubts about that?
It may be.
If you're looking for an answer on that, we'll give you, I'll put something in writing to you and tell you what our status is on that road now, if that's what you're looking for.
What's normal procedure, if you have a culvert that's going up, what procedures or protocol do you take to notify you guys?
Our department will go in and look at it and make an evaluation. Okay? Who would like to be next? Mr. Webb.
I'm Joe Webb. I'm from the Diallo area of South County. For the last 10 years, I've been working with county officials trying to get basically comparative numbers and fiscal numbers that basically the post-commissioners and the public can understand what we're doing as our government. In 2012, a group of citizens, and at that point, the Tea Party, put together a candidate fiscal pledge that they asked candidates to sign it. Unfortunately, most candidates weren't willing to sign it, and it's very curious. I'm going to give you a copy and ask each of you to sign it quite frankly, and we're asking, I personally, all the candidates who are running, to take a look at this and basically tell us why we can't have these things. So, this thing says, candidate fiscal pledge. And I'll give you a copy, so if you want to follow along, you may. Candidate, will you pledge to implement following fiscal controls if they do not already exist for the government or constitutional office which you are seeking election? Line item vetoes allowed. Number one, to publish all financial records in form of five-year histories. Yes or no? And again, this is basic stuff. If you go over to the Board of Education, they basically are doing all these things. To publish an asset and liability report to include reserves and surplus accounts as well as an annual budget. Again, this was put out in 2012, and as recently as the last two meetings, we had a hard time getting to that number, and it's a shame that we don't have that number all the time. It's one of those basic things. How much money do you have extra that's not accounted for? To require consistency between and within all department budgets to include personnel salary increases. To publish quarterly updates of current annual budget with comparative results for the quarter and the year to date. Again, we're looking for basic financial information that's published. That all non-budget expenditures over $25,000 will be subject to public hearing prior to expenditure. That the government body you're elected to will hold public workshops with members' presence and answering, but not conducting official business. And we're doing better on that one now. That you'll hold three annual workshops on the budget. Well, our workshops really aren't workshops. There's basically meetings without enough information, and we don't answer questions. That's not a workshop. That you'll have an annual rent to plan improvement and annual report card for each major of your government provision and for the government you're elected to as a whole. Thank you. There are a couple more. But this is very important, and we need to do these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Anyone? Public commentary is closed. All right, on item under New Business, Consent Agenda, this was presented from our workshop earlier. Commissioners, you have any further thoughts on our county road corrections? Are you ready to move forward? Hold him to approve that?
I'm ready to move forward.
All right. Got a motion, and I've got a second. I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, I've got a motion, and I got a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Consent agenda is approved. Okay, we have a number of variance requests, and as I read these off, the first thing I'll do is ask if there's any objections to these variances. If so, you can raise your hand and come forward and give us your input. The first one is for Berchley Custom Homes LLC, and this is out in the old Toccoa Farm subdivision. The variant requested is to build a new home and a garage 27 feet from the edge of Old Toccoa Loop and 36 feet from the center line of the road. Is there anyone here that objects to that variance? Mr. Patterson, you have any thoughts on this one, sir?
No, I've looked at it, and I don't have any issues at all.
Any issues, Commissioner?
No objections.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this variance. It's at 74 Shepherd's Trail. Wait a minute, this is mailing address for them. The property located is Old Toccoa Loop, lot number C17. I'll make a motion that we approve that variance. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor? Variance is approved. Next variance, item number five, is a request from B.R. Land Investments LLC, and the property location is 1844 Old Highway 76. And the variance request here is essentially to build a heated two-level staircase 60 feet from the edge and 66 and a half feet from the center line of Highway 515 North Turning Lane. And I believe the purpose for this variance is simply trying to get this up to ADA compliance and make it accessible to folks with disabilities. Is there anyone here that objects to this variance? Do you have any comments on this one, Commissioner Patterson?
No, sir, I approve.
Anything for Mr. Johnson? All right, I'll ask for a motion that we approve this variance for B.R. Land Investments LLC. I ask for a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Variance is approved. Item number six is a variance request from Walker and Donna Cox, and this is 167 and Old Toccoa Farm, to build a garage 32 feet from the edge and 41 feet from the center line of Hick Creek Way. Commissioner Patterson, you have any thoughts or objections to this one? First of all, is there any objections in the audience for this specific variance? Do you have any thoughts on this one, Commissioner Patterson?
No, I've looked at the property, and I have no concerns at this time.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve this variance for Walker and Donna Cox. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Variance is approved. Item seven, another variance request from Mall Investment Properties, and this is to build a house with a porch 30 feet from the edge and 38 feet from the center line of Cloudland Crays in Big Sky subdivision. Anyone here that objects to that variance? Commissioner Patterson, you have some thoughts on this one, sir?
No, I've looked at the property and have no concerns.
I have.
Okay, all right. Then I'll make the motion that we approve this variance request from Mall Investment Properties. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor? Variance is approved. Okay, the last variance we have is number eight. Variance request from Serene Mountain Properties, and this is to build a new home with a porch 17 feet from the edge of Grandeur, 24 and a half feet from the center line of Grandeur Drive on lot number 22, 23, 24, and 25. And I have some folks here that object to this variance, I understand. Okay, I'm not going to ask for everyone to come up and talk, so I'm going to ask you to have a spokesperson to come up and please give us your input on why you object to this.
How you go for that easel? Or you need it?
Can he use the easel? I'm sure. Yeah.
Sure.
Hi, thanks for letting us. I'm Barbara Scherwery, S-H-R-E-W-S-B-U-R-Y, because it's a hard name. I am the president of the Home Association of the Falls over Lake Blue Ridge, which is at the top of Grandeur Drive. First of all, the variance request that you have a copy of, and do you all have a copy of the whole thing, the whole package that he requested?
I think so.
Well, on page one, where it says variance requesting, they actually don't, they conflict with one another. It says that the porch will be 17 feet from the edge of Grandeur Drive. The edge of any road in Fanning County, we had someone study this, is considered where the end of the easement is. That is considered the road. If he goes 17 feet off the road, that's going to be 37 feet from the center of the road. He says he's going to go 24.5 feet from the center line. Can you turn that a little bit toward them? Thanks. If you go 24 feet from the center line of that road, which that is our road easement, where my husband is standing, this house was given about a 24-foot easement. It's four feet off of our road easement. This road, and we could pull up the next picture. Have any, as many of you been up Grandeur Drive before?
Yes.
It's exciting, isn't it?
Right.
So that's where we're talking about. That tree is where he wants to build, and that downward slope is where he wants the easement off of it. If we could take that stake thing. The stake is on the edge of the road, and that's eight and a half feet from the center to that stake. And you can see how he's standing. He's already dropping down about a foot just from that location. So it goes straight down. So that house will be located, he wants 24 feet from the center So that house will be located, he wants 24 feet from the center line of the road. That's four and a half feet from our road easement. If that road collapses or has an issue that we have to rebuild it and put up a wall, because if you've been up there, it's extremely steep. If we have to go put a support wall to keep that road up, we won't have any more room. It's going to be in their driveways and things. So there's conflicting information. It doesn't match the 24 feet. But what he's asking to build is four and a half feet from our road easement. Number two, the proposed wells, there's a picture of the wells. We can skip over that one and go to the one with the actual display of this one. These are the proposed wells. On, this is Grandeur Drive. The dotted line is our 40-foot road easement. Every single one of the wells is right off the paved road in the road easement. So not only would we have too close, four and a half feet from the road, but we're going to have a well with, you know, one of those covers sitting right off the main road. So every one of those wells that's proposed in that variance is right in the road easement. Additionally, the current, the plat that was approved by the county is not what he's proposing here. So those setbacks were at the regular setback. They were setting back 35 feet from the road easement, which now we're talking four and a half feet from the road easement. So again, contact. On the next page of the packet I gave you, two of these proposed lots are actually trying to build in Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge, do the Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge plat? Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge, which that one right here, no, this one. Well, we got both of them, but you can put that one down below. The two flats, this is the Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge property according to, we've been paying taxes on it for years. It goes to the bottom of the last property at Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge. And two of the proposed lots are right here on Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge, which again, we've been taxed on that road. We were paying taxes on this road for years. About eight years ago, I was the treasurer of the homeowners association, and I called and I said, "Why are we paying taxes on a road that we maintain?" And they said, "Oh, that's just the way it is." And so every year, we were paying taxes on that road. And now about a year or two ago, which was kind of suspicious, they stopped us paying taxes, but they said they kind of overall did away with taxes on roads. But we still have that, you know, and we still get a tax bill, but it's zero now. So that is proposing it. Also, we paved, and I have a little diagram on that. We paved beyond that because no one was maintaining that road up there. And so we had to pave all the way, I think it was two tenths of a mile, beyond the point where we owned because it was torn up. There was no way to get by it, it was a rocky road. So the road maintenance has been an issue that we have been the only one maintaining Grandeur Drive for a long time until that was purchased, until that road was purchased, or the area below it was purchased. We spent $127,000 on that road maintenance, especially that top road. We recently repaved it and went two tenths of a mile beyond there, which is where those new houses are proposed. And that was additional money. We paid $10,000 additional to do that additional tract of road because it was falling apart. It would have eroded and been nothing. If you look at the picture on page three at the top, that's the condition of Grandeur Drive below us right now, where Aska's Grand Vista, which is the subdivision asking to build. It's deteriorated to nothing. They've pretty much done patch jobs on it since they've owned it. And it's going to fall apart. And every time you go over it, it falls apart. There's been a bare minimum of maintenance on it. This is a dangerous one-lane road the whole way up. The whole road, if we're lucky, there's 13 feet. There's no passing, there's a cliff on one side, and in many cases, there's a mountain with waterfalls coming down on the other. There's nowhere to, we've also pulled the ditches out and put rip raft and things in the ditches to keep them clear. We've got culverts under the road that we maintain as well, in that area especially, to keep that road clear. Because if we don't, the water runs over it, it's icy, and someone's going over. I have pictures, speaking of someone going over it. I know of four people in the past, we've owned for about 10 years up there, and we've lived there for eight years. I've known of four people that have actually gone over that road. Three of them were construction workers, and one was one of the residents in our community. All you have to do is hit an icy patch where the water's going over, or just basically bad driving, or trying to pass somebody too close and you hit the edge and they go over. So two people in this have been hurt. One of these trucks, actually, the one on the left, the whitish one, is actually one of Aska's Grand Vista's construction workers that fell over the edge. So the other one was coming up from Falls Over Lake Blue Ridge, and he was doing paint. So those were just two pictures I happen to have of people going over the edge. We took our ATV with the, what do you call that thing in the front?
Winch.
The winch in the front. And we pulled them back off until the tow truck did come and kept them from falling over the edge. Extremely dangerous road. So, all right, so next page, on number six here, we don't, that is not a through road. So when they go to build up at the top there, we have a gate that stops people from going into the community. We had a lot of traffic, a lot of people coming in because they thought they could get national forest access, so they would just park on one of our lots and go up to the national forest, and we had construction trucks going through. So we actually put a gate up there now in our community on a road. We had to move it up further because there was nowhere to put it down below. So we had to move it up where, and we had to actually put dirt in, create a turnaround, small turnaround. It's not big enough for a large truck. It's big enough for a small car to turn around. We have warning signs going up the road telling them, "Don't come up here. One lane, no turnaround, blah, blah, blah." But again, if they're a small car, they can get up there and turn around. The trucks that come up, they have to call us from our gate and tell us they're stuck. They can't back up. We had one truck, it was a garbage truck coming from that community, that hit our keypad and took it out. And we, they took off. We actually found out from some other people who it was, and they still haven't paid us for it. We had to pay for our keypad.
If I can kind of, not rudely, but interrupt you. What is your objection? You just don't want someone to build that period going through there?
That road is not, at the end of this, I'll summarize that if you'd like. But that is not, there's plenty of room to build on those lots. Some of them are four acres. You can build down below. You don't have to build off the steep road. The steep road, it's just not fit for somebody to go off of. And it's been torn up.
Have you actually talked to the gentleman that's building?
Let's go to the next one, number eight here. And you'll see our commentary from him and the responses we've had from him. He's created hazardous situations. He's been asked about them from different residents in the community. One of his texts is on there telling him that there is rocks and dirt thrown all over the road, and of course, it's clay. It was raining. Several residents went sliding down the hill. My tire actually was one who got punctured in that. I lost my tire, had to go buy a new tire. I didn't ask him for a new tire. All I said is that where there was rocks thrown on the road, someone's got to sweep the road, the rocks off. He told me, "Sorry for the inconvenience, but everybody has that." And that basically, he has no control over it, which he did. He was supposed to be, he was responsible to clean it. So please stop harassing me. That was his response. The pictures of him, we've had hour-to-hour-and-a-half-long waits on that road because he blocks the road totally from us getting by. He puts dirt all over the paved road, and then it becomes a slip and slide down the mountain. So that's our response. He has not been cooperative at all with any of our responses or...
Okay, so Mr. McFarland, no one that supports that, this variance is in the road. Is that correct? Is there anyone here that supports it?
Mr. McFarland, so he built houses in your subdivision, already?
He built the one that's four feet. Yeah, there's two houses that are less than 10 feet. That one's four feet. The other one I didn't measure because there's construction. They're both less than 10 feet from our road easement.
The two houses he built?
They've already done, yes, on Grandeur Drive.
Well, let me tell you where our stance is as in the past. We don't get involved with homeowners association disputes. That's not our... Well, we're represented as a homeowners association, so we're not going to get into that. What we typically do, and what I'm going to recommend to the other commissioners here, is that we ask our inspection office to get in touch with this gentleman and see if there's anything that can be worked out with you folks to have a peaceful resolution of this. But I would, unless you gentlemen have any objections, I would recommend that we table this for two weeks and see if we can get some additional information from the other party.
Can I just make a comment? That the setback from the center line of the road, according to your own document that is on the land development website, the setback from the center of the road is 55 feet. The setback from the edge, which is considered the edge of the easement, is 35 feet. He wants 24 feet from the center of the road. Why are we having, that's basically cutting like 30, over 30 feet off your easements. Why are we having easements and setbacks if we totally ignore them and put a house four feet from the road? Wouldn't do it on Aska Road. You wouldn't do it on a main road. You wouldn't do it on a county road. But because it's not, it says in here that it's a subdivision road. It's not a subdivision road, it's our subdivision road. It's part of it, but it's a private road. So it's not fair to take it away. But this is a dangerous, the end of it, it's a dangerous situation. They should put up a bond if they destroy that road. And the edges of it, we paid, and I've got the receipt in there in your packet. I have the receipt from Johnson Paving in 2017 that we paid 100, almost $106,000 to have that upper road paved. And now those construction trucks have destroyed the lower road, and now they're going to come up and destroy the road. When they go off of it to build on that steep road, there's nowhere to turn around. They're going to destroy the road again. Any questions?
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Patterson?
No, basically, you know, we're not approving. We just want the, you guys to, and we'll have the mediator there to come and look at it and talk, so that hopefully we can have an agreement. If not, in two weeks, we'll look at it again.
Excuse me, is the mediator going to talk to both sides? I mean, our side and...
When we talk about mediator, we're talking about our inspector, building inspector.
Absolutely.
There's no dispute, there's no hardship. There's a problem with putting wells right on the edge of a road. If we, and the well driller, 45 years he's been in business, said you cannot, no sane well driller would ever attempt to put a well rig and drill on that site anyway. But even if you don't, you've got to put the water lines up that side of the road, which are going to be in the road easement. If we ever have to support that steep road with all the waterfalls and all the water erosion that's going on there, we very well, we've been told by oil companies that we very well may have to put a wall down there to support that road. We will have no ring to put that, to put that. And, okay, another thing is everywhere on...
I think we're just, do we need more information on this? Or we just want to go ahead and look at it in two weeks?
Yeah.
Try to do that.
Show the fence.
Being that Johnson Paving has been mentioning this, I'll have to abstain from any further comment, so... What was that?
What I'm going to do right now is make a motion that we table this for two weeks until our land development can look at this and see, give us some more information on it. Mr. Johnson has to abstain because of the reason he just mentioned. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this until our next commission meeting in two weeks.
Can I say something before you make a plea? There's pictures, Bill, can you show them where the fences? Okay, first of all, there's one right here. Every one of the driveways from these houses that are getting easements, the full driveway and their parking areas and their fences, and they just planted these big trees all in the road easement. So we'll have no easement after all this. Just wanted to point that out.
You want to say that again, or you want to go ahead?
Yeah, that's okay with you.
Go ahead, say it.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this for two weeks. Make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have one extension. All right, thank you.
Good times. Sorry.
Can I ask one question real quick? It's going to be wrong.
Sure.
When you, when they rent the variance, do you ever go back and measure to see whether or not they actually have it in the variance?
We link that up to the land development department to follow up on this.
I don't think he's putting them where he says he's going to put them later when he gets permission.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Eddie, you're item number nine. You don't have any variances, do you?
No pictures, nothing. I've got three items that I have just really quick. First thing, with the after-school program and the success we've had with that, we've had a lot of requests and inquiries about a pre-K program, which we would like to do. We'd like to move forward with that. And how we would, how we would work. We've talked to the school system, they actually have waiting lists at the elementary schools. I think Ms. Dawson, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they take 22 at a time, and then everything else goes on the waiting list. So we're pretty confident we would fill up. We would do something small, about 15 students. So what it would do for us is we would like, it would be a $54,000 line item budget for us, which would pay for itself. So with the fees we would charge for the pre-K program, what we'd like to do is take two existing part-time after-school program employees, and we would make those two people full-time. And then with the fees of the after-school program, it would be a three-year-old program and a four-year-old program. And basically, it would pay for itself. So the reason we didn't present an original budget is we had to get approval through the state right from the start, which we have now. So all that paperwork's been filed, it's come back. We have state approval to do a pre-K program in existing facilities we have. Does that make sense to you?
A whole pre-K program?
Yes, we would do 15 three-year-olds students, and we would do 15 four-year-olds students.
What's the time?
Eight to two. We do two days a week with the three-year-olds, four days, or three days a week with the four-year-olds, which is pretty typical in your private pre-K program system.
Three days with the three-year-old?
Excuse me, it's my, it's three days for the four-year-olds, two days for the three-year-olds.
And where are you going to do this at?
We do it at the, at the house at the park where we do the current after-school program.
Would there be any contracts that would be required to be signed, Eddie?
No.
Okay, so no contract required. And really, all you're talking about is at some point in time this year, by adding a program, we might have a possibility of having to adjust your budget.
That's correct. We would start that at the beginning of the 2020 school year in the fall.
And all these, these two ladies or these two employees, they're certified and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
And you've been already approved to...
We're approved through state, through right from the start. Yeah, we just got that notification a couple of weeks back.
So you don't need to do anything to get ready to begin this program?
That's correct. We just, we would staff it. We would just move two part-time employees that are currently certified at the after-school and do the pre-K program.
And you would begin, and you got 15 students, or would you like to begin?
We would like to have before 15 students to start the program.
Mr. Patterson, I think they're planning on beginning at the beginning of next school year.
Yeah, next school, the fall, the fall school year of next year.
I think it sounds great, Eddie. Just add more offerings out there for them.
And we've sent out surveys and that. And the bottom line is, if for whatever reason it didn't fill up, we just don't do it, you know? That's, so we're really outnumbered. If it does fill up, we would have to staff it.
But more than likely, the need, it'll fill up probably every...
That's correct. One elementary school already, I think they have...
Offering for that age group of kids, I mean, usually, and we offer all kinds of services for kids five to teenage, I think that'd be a great service to help us on the parenting side.
We can be flexible with hours, if it's eight to 12 that works best for the community, eight to two. We would just have to be have those children out before the school lessons run, which is typically around, you know, we would want to be set up and ready to go by 3:00.
And they would bring the students, the kids to you?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Sounds good, Eddie.
I have no further questions.
We're good with that.
Are you going to have to take care of it, Eddie?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Among many other things, step two, item two for us is working with the rec board and moving forward with SLOSS projects. Of course, the last project you guys approved was security at Tamman, the bathrooms and security of Osh Ubin. Tamman Park's security system is complete. Osh Ubin, of course, the restrooms are, the walls are framed, so as soon as those restrooms are completed, we will add the security cameras. And the gates ordered and we'll install that as soon as that comes in. The next SLOSS project we'd like to work on, I know it's been mentioned many times, is to start work on the field drainage at Tom Boyd Park. I have a couple of quotes for, the topo's been done and of course, that was a SLOSS project. We'd like to do an engineered drawing, starting with a portion of the field, which will be the large softball, baseball field, from the batting cages out to the end of Field Five. That's suffered the worst. I have one quote from Biomee Products to do the drawing for that, $10,780. We had one from Barge Wagner for $20,400.
What's the difference between the two? Is there any?
Biomee is really a smaller company that does small projects. Barge Wagner is a huge company, very reputable, they've done all the Ripken parks in the southeast. It's really, from what I can tell, we've had portfolios from both companies, drawings, I've visited a couple of parks, both guys did great work. One is really small, one is really big, is what it kind of announced to us.
And what's the name of the company with the $10,780 bid?
B-I-O-M-E. Biomee Projects.
Biomee, that's the...
Projects.
Projects?
Projects.
Projects.
I'm sorry. So, so what we'd like to do is, is coupled with that, we'd like to get engineering drawings started and we'd like to laser grade and add top mix to three of the fields. That hasn't been done, I think, in five years. Field Five is in really bad shape. And River City Athletic, who does, I talked to Darren Danner today, that's who does the high school work, they do tremendous work. And they would do three of our fields for $16,850. That would bring the total for the drainage to get initially started for $27,630. And we'd obviously need to get on the list with these guys.
And you need to move fairly quick, don't you?
We do, we could actually kind of tie them up with the River City guys when they're up here to do some sprinkling at the, at the school.
All right. I don't have any further questions on this. You and I had an opportunity to discuss this prior. Do commissioners have any other questions on this? You'll need us to vote on it. Any thoughts, gentlemen?
We're going to separate these notes, or we're going to vote them all together?
I'd like to really do it under, probably easier for Robin if we do it under one SLOSS project, if that works, it's all drainage, but I could do it faster than that.
This is totally up to you.
It's just easier. If it's one, we can do both of that matter, however you guys will do it, as far as voting on approval.
I think it's, it's high time we do something with the drainage. We just need to make sure this time, whatever dollars are expended, we're fixing the drainage, not prolonging. I mean, you know, we've had to do some things to get by for several years, but I think it's near time we have to do something on physical, especially in wet years like this year. Baseball season comes around, it's, it's going to be tough, so.
And what we've asked both architects to do is they have to have, they agreed to have the drawings done for us by the end of the school season, which is the end of baseball, softball. So as soon as that season ends, we know what needs to be done while we still have some dry work. That's kind of the stipulation I asked for.
Okay, and the name of the company again that did the $16,850 laser?
River City Athletic.
Okay. Any further questions? I'm going to ask for a motion, I'll ask for both these in the same motion, that we approve Biomee Projects at $10,780 and for River City to do the laser grading at $16,850. I'm going to make that motion and I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Last item, I would like to, I've had a couple employees, one has put in a notice and allowed, the, the other one is about to leave. So with kind of the mowing maintenance that we need, it's very much a revolving door. I would like to not replace one of those employees and pursue subbing out part of the mowing in the park, basically from above the road that circles the park, which is basically those high knobs and wivvies out to the gate at Johnson Paving and kind of up the drives up to the rec center. I, I think we could do it more cost-effective than hiring another full-time employee with benefits. I would like to pursue that with board approval of...
And what, I think what we discussed before, since you went on a two-year contract with your other mowing and you've got another year left on it, we would, what I would suggest is we do a one-year contract on this part and then roll it in next year where you did it all on one bid. Right? Makes sense to combine it all? When you put a bid out there, if it continues to be a two-year bid, you're just expanding what we would be doing and maybe have a little better leverage on the total amount. Right? Makes sense?
I'm good either way. I like, I think it will save us several thousand dollars plus the wear and tear, so quit my mowing.
So really, all you're asking right now is just permission to give the bids for doing that additional work.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. You guys have any issues with that?
I don't, I don't.
Will you thank Mr. Johnson?
So we'll just tie this proposed work in conjunction with the contract. Any maintenance when it comes up again, just tie it all together.
Correct.
All right. You have my vote.
Okay. Have at it.
All right. So are there any questions for you?
No, sir, I don't.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Building. Mr. Sutton, please come up and tell us what we've got, what we're looking at.
Okay, I have, provided you a preliminary proposal for a pre-design phase for that white path with the idea of building a foundation for the project before starting the design phases with this. So this would be a data gathering, programming type phase to find out what your needs are, what needs to go into the facility, how many square feet, and then also to bring in some engineering professionals to go through the building with me as well to look at any potential additional issues or anything that hadn't already been flushed out. That's primarily what it is, so it's really, to make sure you have a good foundation for the design of the project, you really need to get this information gathered and also it would include some site information as well with that. So I think it's built out, you know, into two basic phases, which is initial phase is the programming and data collection, and then a second phase would be an initial sort of concept, kind of idea, diagrammatic type phase to look at once we have these areas and everything, to sort of do a little block layouts within the facility and see how that might work, and then provide some other options. And of course, this are prior to actually going for plans and, you know, the detailed design with that. So I've outlined in there some of those initial fees and then future phases that would need to occur, but we really don't know what that cost would be until we do the initial programming, data gathering. So then we define the scope of work and then I can get hard numbers on that, especially for my engineering consultants, et cetera, that'd be part of my...
And just so everyone knows, you're fairly familiar with the property already, correct?
Yes, that's right. So I've gone through it in extensive detail and, and have a very good understanding of the property and its pros and cons and everything that we're going to be pretty much dealing with as we go into it.
So that would be a good thing, you're not starting from scratch.
Correct.
Will you anticipate being completed Phase One?
Well, we could pretty much get started right away and so it would probably take approximately two months to do the initial phase to do that, and then once I get with my engineers and see what their involvement in detail time, once we do with that, we can tie that down to some specific dates for you with that. Of course, it depends on when you would officially authorize us to get going and go from there.
And the Phase One fee that you're proposing is $37,234, and then the Phase Two fee is $28,592.
That's correct.
What other cost would you foresee on top of that figure if you don't mind?
Well, for the future phases, you would have that, and so once you get into that final design, you're going to, depending on the final scope of work, it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 6% to 8% of construction cost. And of course, the scope will define, we do a preliminary cost estimate, you know, initially to try to define the, the scope of the work. Because you may or may not, you know, build out the entire building space area that's there, plus we've got to determine if there's areas that need to be either some pieces taken off that were not appropriate additions to that, and then, and then of course repairs that are made to that as well. But all in all, it should be a net savings for you, significant net savings over a new facility. Whenever you do an addition like this, it takes some additional front-end work, like there are no drawings on the facility whatsoever. So we've got to go in and do measured drawings of it, so we have base plans to work from on the facility. So that's part of included in this cost as well as to do those as-built drawings in there.
Well, I, I would think that by doing this assessment is a problem of where we need to start. Do the assessment, assess what space we have, what space is feasible, so on. It's became a little bit complicated because there's been some recent releases of libraries going there and monies and it's kind of, this is where we need to start.
Right. It's all the more reason to sort of build that foundation.
If we start here, we can move forward, know what we do have.
Right.
Know what everyone wants, know what the needs are.
What's possible.
And so I think this is, this is the correct step to take. We start here, we, we see our need, we see the, you know, what we can use, can't use of the building, what's feasible, what's economical, economical, and just, and we can move forward from there. I think it'd be a good place to start and move forward.
And we also look at, you know, we go in and look at your existing spaces and do takeoffs to find out how many square feet are you using now, what you anticipate maybe future growth and what sort of allowances that you want to provide for that, so we'll help make recommendations related to that so that any of the final design will allow that flexibility so that you can expand in areas that you need to, where you can add in a library or whatever into the, into the facility. So it gives you some great flexibility, but you've got to know at where you are now in terms of your space utilization and needs, and then where you're going to be a few years from now, and then that will define exactly how everything goes into the building.
I think one of the key things about it is that property, total acreage I believe is four and three-quarters acres, and there's places over there where we could, by working, and we had discussed that before, use the space that's not being used as potential for a future expansion, or if we need to do something now to, there's a lot more elbow room potential over there than just within the structure as it is.
Yeah, you would have room to potentially either add on to that facility or do a separate outbuilding within the same site. And I think that's part of what that's the initial step will do, will show what are some of those options that you have. So then as you move into the final design phases, then you can take that into consideration as you move forward on the project. And then how you handle also the site with the parking for the public visibility, how the site access is going to work for people coming and going from the site, and so that'll all be taken a look at in this initial phase from a conceptual standpoint and a programmatic standpoint.
You've had quite a bit of experience redesigning not only government buildings but library facilities as well.
Yes, exactly. And then we've, I've done similar projects like this before for Bucks County. They had purchased an existing Publix, I'm sorry, it was a Piggly Wiggly and a dollar store building that had been abandoned near the downtown, it was an eyesore, and we converted that into their county administrative functions and put it all in there, including 911 facilities, everything went into that, put a nice new facade on it so you can't even tell it was a grocery store before. And it turned out to be a very successful project for them on that. And then I did similar to where you're dealing with for Forsyth County a few years back, they had, their county commission offices were in the same building as the, the courts facilities. So it got very crowded as the county was growing, and so in that case, they decided to build a new building, so they moved the county administrative and commission offices into a new building, and then those vacated spaces were converted back into courts facilities, so expanded their courts, square footage area, and also expanded the, the administration area into a new building. So it was sort of a similar process, but we had to go through a programming preliminary phase and see what the options are, see how many square feet they need by department, you know, who's going to be included in the project, and all that is part of the first step. And that's really the prudent way to go about it. So then you're sort of controlling your expenditures as you go. And then it also allows me then to provide really, you know, hard prices on the future phases, because then I know how big it's going to be and who's going into it. And then each department has different needs, you know, and if this library involved has a different... a different need as well. And so, but I, you know, on my team, I've put together the comprehensive team, it's structural engineer, mechanical, electrical, civil engineer, so it's the full complement of engineers needed for this particular project.
And you have a website that with a lot of examples of your governmental and private projects that you've completed through Georgia.
That's correct.
Give us an idea of just your experience and background in this area. How long have you been doing this type of thing and so forth?
Oh gosh, you know, my own company's been in business for, it'll be eighteen years in August. And then prior to that, I worked with other architectural engineering firms, were doing city and county work, probably the last thirty-plus years in this, throughout Georgia, primarily in the metro Atlanta area that I've worked based on my location. But I've also worked in federal government projects and DOD, as well as in the private sector. So it's been, you know, I've done some corporate office administrative. So you've basically got a conversion to administrative type facility, multifunctional and then with the library. And so I've got, done that on the county side. I've worked also on city municipal projects, did a study for City of Villa Richmond, where they had very similar, they were looking at purchasing the Avani Motors Building, which was a huge industrial automotive complex and they wanted to convert that into their municipal complex. So we did an existing facility analysis for them, did some measured drawings, did a study cost estimate, and then did a preliminary concept design so they could see what it might look like for them when they were looking to do that. So similar type projects, it's not like a renovation, it's a conversion, I call it, because you're converting the use, because it originally was an industrial use and so now it's gonna be more administrative office type use. And so there are different elements and factors that go into the mechanical, electrical systems, the codes, the exiting, the population and those sorts of things. So it's not a street renovation, it's a conversion. That's what we've done before. So there is a difference there. But what, you know, but, you know, we're ready to go. Like I said, we do, and I don't have, you know, I've got a couple of things under construction, so that's good, because it's not in the design phase. The only, I have one small little design project right now and it's actually with, it's a private, it's with Channel Forty-Six, the CBS affiliate of downtown Atlanta, an administrative office renovation for them and their offices in downtown Atlanta.
And you've been, you've put a lot of time into the process.
Yes, yeah, we're, you know, like I said, there's nothing really into the design phase because the construction phase is periodic, but I'll have to go periodically make inspections for that. And that's a project with Douglas County that I'm working with right now, which was, actually it's an eight-million-dollar community recreation facility.
Would you have a rough idea about how long it would take before you would be ready to send bid, send bids out on this? I know some of it depends on us, but just a rough idea.
Well, there's, there's two ways to go about it, you know, and that's one of the things after, and I put it in my proposal, or after we go through this initial programming, the concept stage here before we get into the full-blown design stage, there needs to be decisions, you, okay, do we go and do a design bid build, the traditional way to put it out on the street? Or in a project like this, the other option would be to bring in a general contractor in a construction manager phase. In other words, in that particular process, what you do, it allows you then to get them on board to help with some of the constructability issues, because you're dealing with renovation, some demolition that will go with it, so it's a little bit more complex, so they can flush some of those things out and hopefully avoid change orders down the road. And also, it may allow you to attract some bigger and more contractors to the table. And basically, you interview them on qualifications, you could have them provide a competitive fee percentage, in other words, they, that their overhead and profit markup would be on the project. And then they get competitive bids from all their subs, which is, can be overlooked. So that's another way to do it. And that, and I guess the advantage there would be to eliminate unknowns, because when you're doing a renovation, a lot of times you get in there and if you're moving something on a wall, you discover something and it's an unknown and it's a discovery item, so you have to carry a bigger contingency. But that's something we can talk about, the pros and the cons of that with you. But I think what, one of the good things will, I think it'll track more contractors, you know, with that process as well. And also, they're a help to the design and engineering team during the design phase and can better track the costs of where the designer is going with that.
So at what point do we need to send out an, an us as a can to figure out how much space we need, who would be involved in the move administratively, the library, how many square foot they need, what they require? Because you're probably gonna need those numbers before you start designing, correct?
Exactly, and that's what I would be doing in it. Basically, we would just need an initial kickoff with you and you might have like contact people in there and provide me access to go into your facility. And I'll determine if you have existing plans of this building, so I can determine the existing square footage that you're utilizing. And then also, I can interview certain of the key people and talk about, you know, what, you know, what are some of the common issues, you know, we don't have enough storage, or, you know, we had to put this person out in offices in the closet or something, some of the common things we run into. Or they may say, well, you know, what we have is fine. And then we come back and then we generate a program report, a space needs analysis that lists every space, offices, storage, everything with square footage requirements attached to it. And then that gives you a total square footage. And then we look at that as a block for each department and then do sort of a block layout in that existing building, so we see if it works. But basically, all I need, all I hear from you guys really would be an initial sort of kickoff meeting and then if there's staff that you wanna work with me to help me sort of extract this information first of the existing utilization and then also what we've proposed for the new facility, which may be, maybe more, maybe some expansion, you know, we've done a few of these, so there's always some general recommendations for future expansion. And then we present those to you with the options and you'll decide, and we present a formal presentation of that program report. It'll be an actual hard copy report that you will get for you to review and then you can go through it and then say approve it or want a revision to it or whatever. And that's all done before you start designing, so that everybody's on the same page, so that we know exactly what you want and what you need before we get started moving the design on it. Does it make sense to you?
Oh, it makes sense.
Okay.
We're just kind of in the pickle because there was a press release saying the library's gonna be in the Van Raal building.
Right.
Everybody's just kind of learning that through social media, so.
Right.
You know, we should, we should have done this a lot longer before, but anyways, kind of, I think what we're doing is the right step, so.
Yeah.
As long as this isn't getting, if we okay, you can go ahead with this, I mean, there's other probably criteria, I just want you to know, there's other criteria maybe not through up from the state with whatever grant they're giving.
Right. And that's part of, during this process, a lot of that goes flush out. And that will flush out, so then we'll have, we'll have a better feel. There, again, good reason to do this initial step, to flush out any of those types of issues or things before you start the design and you know exactly what's going in there.
Right. And I follow that, as long as you know it's not, you're not just moving forward with a design.
No, no, this'll be one step, and that's why I just gave you a fee, so you'll have to formally approve before we go to the next step, you know, the other phases. So you'll get that report, you know, and then you may say, you know, well, we wanna change this, or it looks great, you know, and then you'll have to approve before we go to that next step. And then I'll provide you at that point, because then I know how big it is, how many square footage, then I give you hard numbers for those other phases. So maybe you'll see that as well.
But the very first step is we have to vote to approve certain architectural services for your, your services. You got any more?
No, I, I think it's a important thing to understand, kind of skirt issues that it is a process. And like you said just a second ago, you've gotta give us some hard numbers before we can approve anything. For us to approve it right now at the beginning and not know how much it's gonna cost us is absurd.
Well, I can't give you the hard numbers, I know how many square feet.
Yes, a closer idea of everything. You're, you're the starting point, right there. And that's what I want people to understand, that we've got to gather this information before we can decide on how we wanna do it. We're excited about the library and we're, and we wanna move forward, but the main thing is we wanna know how to do it properly and financially efficiently.
Right.
And so, it's just a step-by-step process.
Right. And I was trying to do that with the fees as well, because I can get better and more accurate fees with more information.
Right.
And the program will give me more information and that's why I was suggesting, let's do the first step and then I can give you, and if I went out now, everybody's gonna estimate the worst-case scenario.
Right.
So it may not be in your favor from that standpoint. So I was trying to provide you with the, the best and, and, you know, get the best bang for your buck, basically, for that. So then, but in order to do that, it's like the first thing an engineer that we say to me is, oh, how many square feet's going in the building? Well, nobody knows right now.
Nobody knows.
Not until we do this first step. So that's why I'm only asking for approval for this first step.
First step.
And then, and not the subsequent steps. Then I'll be giving you the hard numbers for you to look at and scrutinize and to approve that separately. So it's not, when you're approving this, you're not approving all those design phases with that. It's just this initial, which is basically a research programming, trying to determine what you got, you know, and what's gonna go into the facility.
So we've gotta work with the state, Mr. Johnson said, we've gotta work with the library board, and we've got to be involved with it.
Yes.
So it's gonna be a collaboration with you of all these entities.
Yeah, I couldn't do it without that.
Exactly.
Right. And I hope we're gonna work together to go through that.
It's a lot to grasp to start with.
Right. But we've done it before, we've been through the process.
Right.
And so, we will work with you very closely and we will work if the library's involved, we'll work very closely with them. I mean, we'll even go, if they wanna go look at other libraries that they've seen that they like, we'll travel and take a look at those, which is not uncommon. And so, we'll do whatever, you know, needs to be done basically on that, you know, to, you know, get them comfortable and also confident in what, what we're doing. Because we'll have to do the same thing, get the programming, how many square foot, you know, that they're gonna need, you know, and so that's a separate process.
Right.
So we'll be meeting with them and their staff, just as if we'll be meeting with the county administrative staff as well to get all their input. And then we'll report back to you, because you'll have to overview everything, because a lot of times we get everybody's wish list, you know, and that needs to be scrutinized, obviously.
Right.
And you guys ultimately make the decision on that. So it's not going in a vacuum, it'll be back and forth and we'll set up some standard meetings and things to help facilitate.
Well, it's good to know that you've got that experience with the state and working with them, because they've got certain stipulations for us to get the grant. If we don't, you know, they're not gonna give us that kind of money without certain stipulations and timelines that we've got following.
Right.
And you're aware of that, you've got experience in that.
Right. Yeah, I've worked a lot of, a lot of different grants, you know, across the board, CDBD grants and they have their requirements and so, done a lot of projects with those attachments to it as well.
We appreciate your time.
Well, I think we need to, if you got any more questions, then we'll have to formally make a vote to move forward.
With the architect?
Yes, with Sutton Architectural Services.
Was this bid, was there any bids for this?
Excuse me, ma'am, this is, we're moving from, this is a service, it's not a bid. We can move forward services, so.
Has the money been appropriated?
Gentlemen, are there any more questions?
No, it hasn't.
Well, I, I don't have any questions, I just, I think we need to, we need to move forward and we need to find out exactly, structurally, everything that he's, he's, he's proposing for Phase One. I think we, we need, we need that before we figure out, we're gonna need that before we decide any. Library, convenience store, I mean, I mean, whatever goes along with that building. We need to know what our building is first.
Right.
And I, so I, I mean, I think, no matter what goes in the building, how many administrative offices, no matter what size they are, we need to figure out structurally what parts need to stay, which parts need to go, which parts can be salvaged, you know, if, anyway. But that's up to you, because that, that's why you are who you are. So I think with Phase One, the programming and the data gathering, no matter what we do, that has to be done. It's just like with the wrecked fields, we had to get a tow boat of the whole place before we figured out how to make it drink.
Right.
So I think it's reasonable to get, to go this route.
That was a service.
And, and in the meantime, we're gonna have to, a lot of us are gonna be having to do some, have some other inputs, some other, we're, we're gonna have to gather that on our part as well, because we're, we're trying to keep up with a press release.
Right. Well, then in the kickoff meeting, we'll establish some of those things, who needs to get what information, what you guys need to do. We'll set, start to begin to set up standard contacts, staff contacts, when we'll have meetings and then when we can come and begin to look at their space and see what they're working with. And then, then we figure out what you want to go into that building and then we'll see what the square foot requirements are and then we'll see if it all fits and then what's left over, you know, for future expansion or whatever.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we retain Sutton Architectural Services Incorporated to move forward. I'm gonna make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Make second.
Got a second? All in favor? Thank you, Peter. Thank you. Item number twelve. I think there's election coming up this year and we have to set a resolution to set the qualifying fees for this year's election. And I think, Sherry, did you have a few sheets like this you're gonna have available for people, particularly folks that are running for office, they may wanna look at that?
Yes.
We'll have that available for folks to look at. Anything else we need to do on this, Miss Dawson, other than just take a vote?
You have to take a vote and then once it's approved, you know, the clerk will need to publish it and say.
Okay. All right. One, just for how long, one week?
I think it's best to vote for two, but we'll confirm that.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, if you have any questions on this one?
No, it's pretty standard.
Okay. All right. I'll ask for a motion that we have a resolution to set the qualifying fees for elected officers for 2020. I'll ask for a motion.
Make the motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? We are gonna need executive session to discuss personnel issues, so I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, we're in executive session now. Okay, commissioners, wanna make a motion, we come out of executive session?
Make the motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We're out of executive session. We discussed personnel matters and there were no decisions made. I wanna say one more thing before I ask for us to adjourn. Over the weekend, we had, with the storm Saturday, primarily Saturday evening, we had over two hundred trees down on roads in the county. And I wanna thank the Public Works Department, countless volunteers, citizens in the county, Tri-State Electric, Blue Ridge, EMC, and G-Dog, everybody worked together to try to get these roads cleared and safe for citizens. And I, I know that a lot of hours put in, our shore department, all night Saturday basically and Sunday, Zach, so I just wanna thank everybody for that. And some damage, but, you know, thank goodness nobody I'm aware of. thank goodness somebody I'm aware of had any direct injuries from that. So that's all I have to say. Gentlemen, ask for adjournment?
Make a motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, Peter.